It's a short agenda.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Speng County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. First item this morning is Nikki. Good morning.
Good morning.
Why can't it turn on?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to take a moment and introduce our new IT intern, Daniel Cook. He's from Angola High School, and he's going to be working with us about five days a week, an hour a day, and one of the days a little bit longer. So you might be seeing him around in the offices along with our IT staff. So just going to introduce him.
Welcome.
All right. I have two items that I would like to get approval on. One of them is something that I've already gotten verbal approval for part of it. So this is just maybe a summary, and then one more portion in regards to our email licenses, additional email licenses that were required. So I had recently gotten verbal approval for an additional forty-five email licenses, and this is to help with our deputies and some of our EMS staff that are using personal emails. And we're moving them over to having county emails. To do that, I first asked for the approval for the email licenses, and then also I had to add the virus protection, and then realized after that that I also made the deal with Multi-Back Road Identification, which I had to do it. If you have the money in my budget, the amount that you see there in front of you as a total is the recurched cost. So I just wanted to ask for approval to move forward with that.
Sorry.
Are there any discussions? All favors signify by the eye.
The next thing on the agenda that I had is moving our phone server that has been at the old county courthouse over to the new judicial center. And in order to do that, we utilize the new fiber that is over at the judicial center. It helps us get the phone server out of the unoccupied courthouse to where I can keep an eye on it. We had a hard drive failure on it last month that we took care of that really made highlighted the need to get it over to a building that's occupied that I can observe it more closely. The cost on this, I have here a breakdown. I think I gave you a memo already, but this is updated numbers that I need saved. In order to do this, I do have to do a software upgrade on the phone servers. We have two phone servers. One is at the old courthouse, and the other is in the EMTs as the secondary. We were able to work out with our fiber vendor that we could actually have all of the equipment at the judicial center as far as the equipment from Frontier. So that saves us some money doing that. And I will say the investment that Steuben County put into acquiring their own fiber also helped us be able to do that. So that is something that was a good investment that we did. In order to do this, we also have to move our long distance to Frontier. So they'll have our local and long distance. So we will move away from Lumen as our long distance carrier. So we're hoping to see some savings there. Right now, it's a little over a hundred and twenty a month that we're paying to Lumen for long distance. It's actually gone down quite a bit over the years, but we're hoping to see that go away as we move over to Frontier, our long distance provider. So along with that, when we do this, it will be our five-year service agreement with Frontier as a part of that. So the only thing that's not included in this packet that you have in front of you is the the Torsica amount that you see there. They have some typos and things in the scope of work that I wanted to go over. It will not change the amount of money we spend. So I will, once I get those corrections, I will bring it over for signature that those are the amounts that I'm looking to get approved. And I would like to request to be able to use the judicial center bond as payment for the project.
Does this have anything to do with the old analog phone lines as well?
Yes, and we are going to, we're actually reviewing the ones that will go away, but we can't do it if we're
Oh, so you have that last time given?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I've been working on that.
Just wanted to make sure that we don't need a, and we've been paying for them for a long time. And I've got, for about six months now, we've been advising any alarm companies and things that and even if you follow the southern lines.
That would be great, yeah. I do have that.
So we're all ready. We're set. I actually have one on my desk for that. I didn't know that was coming. So yes.
And also in regards to that, we have analog lines for our elevators, and there are, I'll bore you with all the technical details, but there's a little gizmo that we put in to convert those over to work on this as well. So.
Make the motion to approve.
Are there any discussions? But we'll have what that number is sometime today.
Yep.
It's, it was pretty significant.
Any further discussion? There are none. All favors signify by the eye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Appreciate it.
Ladies, good morning.
Morning. I came before you this morning to request permission to seek in the purchase of a small drone that would be jointly co-owned between our office and the Health Department. Alicia's been doing some research. She's found one, her name is on, that would have worked for both of our agencies as they start, we want to try to build out a program. There's been evidence in the last year to support the use of a drone for our agency. You had the opportunity to go out on storm damage assessments with me, where we've mentioned how a drone would be added beneficial, an added benefit to see from an aerial view the path of destruction. And we've been called out a few times to assistance in search and rescue operations, where we've then had to make additional phone call requests to agencies with drones and try to track them down. So this would be a small step in a positive direction for purchasing a drone and to be able to utilize by our two agencies. We would do a cost share. It's fully cost. The money is currently available. I have it as well as the Health Department.
Alicia, would you be using that for, on your side for, for what?
So initially, it would be used for preparedness, but also it would be used for the safety of our EHS staff when we're doing complaints, especially in some of these rural properties where we're not allowed to enter the property and we have clear no trespassing. We can do an aerial view and maintain safety.
So with drones, these come with mandatory training to be able to operate them in airspaces. It's either one of you currently certified or not currently certified, no. However,
one of our volunteers, EMS personnel, Chad Zerbo, just went through the training. He spent a week, last week, two weeks ago now, in Richmond, and went through the training with Tremont Fire. He's a member on there. He also works, obviously, with the EMS and is one of our volunteers. He's been through that. He and I had discussions. And when I told him we were looking at this, and I said that we were going to build out a program and have, you know, all the Ts crossed, all the Is dotted, and how it's going to be used, and he said, yes, I can help you do that. So we're, we are actively pursuing that as well. So that will be forthcoming, yes.
Sure, for how many you get certified on?
That's three operators right now, I believe, on ours.
Four, three or four.
What's the typical length of time it takes to get certification?
They did it in a week, and then he said they just have to take the test.
Yeah.
I think most of it offline, yeah.
To approve? Further discussions? None. All favors signify by the eye.
Right.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Carter.
So I've got there three items. The first is the all-included cost to McAllister for our generator panel replacement, start, finish, ending at that single invoice of thirty-three, two-seven-five, and twenty-seven cents. You'll notice in all of the invoices there, though, we've got a couple, once you go through them all, add them up, a few of those are credits, because after a review by us and McAllister's, they're fantastic, but we got about, I think we're close to twenty thousand dollars in credits there, too. So, which brought the number down. Originally, we thought we were going to be over the forties, thank to heavens or not. So that worked out very well. That's coming.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome. I figured you'd be looking great. That's coming out of that general project, jail upgrade project funding, if that's approved this morning. The second quote or invoice for the eighteen-hundred-and-ninety dollars is batteries for the generator. At once all of this was done, they shortened the life on the batteries and had to be replaced. I'm asking for those to come out of our general jail maintenance fund for the facility, not including that in the upgrade costs there. Eleven-seventy fund, eighteen-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Those are for just batteries for the generator.
Questions? Those are really good batteries.
Yeah. Me, too. I didn't know, I didn't know when they were replaced in my time, so hopefully, hopefully they'll last that long again. The last item I have is the general service agreement or contract for that Spillman position. I sent that over for Mr. Stuckey to you and the Commissioners as well, get some feedback. We received an application and going on that Spillman opportunity, but in conversation, review, and looking at both, both ways for her accessibility and some options. And for us, a contract looked to be a very viable option, in my opinion. Wonderful part about this contract is we get her in person a number of hours each quarter. She's willing to do that, which is wonderful, along with, obviously, remotely working. So that's what Spillman can provide. Spillman would be a call, would be a call to a call center. If we had an issue or a direct person, they would eventually put us in contact with, with her. Obviously, she would provide everything Spillman and in person.
So there's a specified number of hours per quarter to be onsite.
Right.
Is there any specified hours, number of hours of support in each quarter? So it could be
Just, it could be every day. It'll probably be a call a day. Someone entered a name in twice, or, you know, a location was misentered and need to be corrected within the system. So there will be contacts a single day.
But there's no restriction of number of hours per day, right?
Which is what Spillman provides. Twenty-four seven. We obviously would not do that to her, too, in the case of, is it wait till the next day? Well, I shouldn't say that. Somebody might, but it would be more of a general burden unless it was an emergency. And I can't think of any of those really, truthfully.
Don, do you have any questions or?
No, I believe it's fine. Any issues?
Any issues with that onsite equipment?
Well, that'd be your, legally, there's still that issue, too. The only question, which I did not speak with her about, was the training. I don't believe it in here. It speaks of, maybe it does, as I reviewed it, the training. You know, yearly, I'm assuming that will just be on her, or the Commissioners had a different opinion on whether or not, because there is a training line currently provided for Spill. Keep updated. And I know they do have a yearly, I think they have several conferences or trainings. And it's not listed in here, but we do have a training line. So if this, if you were to approve, and we were to take that full-time employee out of the bucket, and this just be moved over into service agreements or contract budget line, could be my assumption, would we keep the training line as well? Spillman is the company. So if we contracted with Spillman, that would not be a concern. I mean, they are the company, so. And I haven't spoken with her about it. I just, in reviewing it again, noticed that that was something, and since we have that training line. I like the ideas of keeping it, and then we know it sounds like the equipment. At first, I reconsidered the look at the possibility of a laptop being provided, but on the other side of that, I think that's very viable for us to have our own property doing that, that we can get returned back to us. I don't know how many secrets are within Spillman, but, yeah.
I have a question. The only thing, I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do. The only thing I would be concerned about is that if it's as a contract, then she is being contracted by us, whereas other times the training where the county pays for that, they are actually our employee.
Right.
So I'd be concerned about that, but.
Do you know how much is in that training line, by the way?
I don't.
I don't know why I want to think fifty-five-hundred, five-thousand.
Five-thousand.
How much?
Four-to-five-thousand.
Yeah, I thought so. I thought so.
Yeah. So say I can ask Erin if she can grab it real quick, if you.
No.
Settle that.
Just for food for thought.
That's my only concern.
Yeah.
Is that somebody else that is contracted out would.
Would not receive that.
Would not receive that.
Very valid point.
Just keep that in mind.
Questions?
I would make a motion to for the contractual agreement excluding the training. I think that needs to be a separate.
It's like that.
Further discussions? There are none. All favors signify by the eye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Kelly, so that looks to me as though I need to now submit to counsel. What would that be, a transfer of funds, to transfer those funds, or would that be an appropriation to the service line and the removal of the training and employee?
I will get with you and Kelly on that.
Just have to work through that. Okay, all right.
The numbers and everything. What, is there a date? When does it start?
It can, no, there is no date. It's, I think there's a rough date set up in front of this, but no, there's no date, actual start date. Obviously, this is a yearly. I don't believe she had in here. She may. So the eighth day of September, yeah, she has the eighth day of September. It's the agreement date. So we wanted to modify that.
Not necessarily saying the training date, but I'm not sure that belongs in the same contract.
Oh, actually, yes, sure.
Because at this point, they're contractors, they're not.
Right. Understood. Since we already had the line established, was my question.
If we had Spillman as our contractor.
Right.
We wouldn't be paid for them.
We would not do it.
Similarly, if we had Spillman or whoever that contractor.
Again, I've not had the conversation with her. She made this assume that that's, you know, that's the training is on her. But since the line is there, before we go have conversations with the auditor, I want to make sure we're all in agreeance.
It's eighty hours onsite quarterly.
Right.
Forty-two-nine for ten.
Thank you for my turn.
Thank you. Jim?
Good morning. Good morning. All right, no LPA vouchers today. States, the first thing that we have a difference is small structure number seven. That was our one-point-four-dash-two, Community Crosses Mansion Grant Project. We have finished all final punch list items on that. We did have a change order that we're working through and trying to get that final line so that we can get the fast estimate out for it. And then that project will be complete. Our Community Crosses Mansion Grant twenty-twenty-twenty-five dash one, we're finishing up touch-up items north of Fremont today, paving some approaches and some shoulder work. And we plan on striping Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, and then all that. That will work. For update on the House Bill fourteen-sixty-one road funding work, we had some draft memorandum of understandings between Salem and Jackson Townships last, last meeting. They're sending that to Mr. Stuckey for his review and comment. Finally got to send them to him last weekend on.
Yeah, I did review them. I don't have any problem with any of them. I mean, they're, for what they are. I mean, they're, they're just a MOU, so things can change as issues change, so.
So I have three of them. York Township sent me one as well, which I sent back to Mr. Stuckey. Two, so I'm basically copying the same form. So I'm just looking for your approval if we can move forward and sign them if you're susceptible to that. Today, I have them here. Sign off on them.
Did you know the reasoning behind this fourteen-sixty-one? This is all unincorporated areas that we're part of the county to take care of anyways. So why are we, they making us jump through more hoops to actually work on roads that we're working on anyways?
So I can't speak for state legislature. You know, my conversations with the townships, I explain to them that we have to do two things. We have to have a memorandum of understanding between us and them, and if they are, if they'd rather have one with the municipality that's in there, so one of them's there, rather have it with Orlando, Town of Orlando, or City of Angola, Hamilton, that's fine. They can do that with whoever. But the state says that they have to have a memorandum of understanding with at least one of us with the new house money bill, and that if they have excess funds, they have to turn them over to one of us.
There are some townships in Indiana that have significant effects, and that's what's.
There's where it's going.
There's where it's at.
Not saying ours did. But so we're just trying to dot those Is and cross those Ts. And I told them, anyone who wants to do that with us, we'll make it as general as possible to help them meet those requirements and jump to those hoops. It's really just won't work for me.
Need it more than you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these, these townships, the amount that they have in excess, it's going to be how many? It's literally nothing. I tapped them, failing you once in each line. I figured it should be you.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-twenty-five road program, we are wrapping up today. We had some fog seal that we were going to do. That is being stated today. Fog seal is just an additional application put on top of chip seal. Helps lock in stone longer during the chip seal block. We're doing some stuff that we had contracted, but we also have some stuff that we're going to do a test run out on a couple of our intersections, just so we can verify labor rates for next year. Then twenty-twenty-five road program, all our local work is done after the day.
So it's one-fifty, is that through micro steel?
Uh, one-fifty was sand seam.
That's what they call sand seam?
That, that, that's our sand seals. So that's slag sand purchased out of SDI. And we have sweeping today. So we have some spots, like most of our sand seals, we got about half of them swept last week. We're sweeping the other half probably today. Whatever, we don't get done today, it's going to be off tomorrow. But then we have some other chip seals that we want to touch up. Most of the standard chip seals, we all had sweeps in our seconds. That will be done today. That will be done today. Then I had two additionals. The first thing, I have that kind of handout for slim plowing to explain our thinner operation procedures. If you guys have any questions or anything you guys want to touch up on, on that, I can do that now or later. But if you guys are good with it, I can move forward to create maps. So we can get closer to having our meeting with school transportation departments and sheriff's department to get on the same page of how we're doing. And we'll have snow events this winter.
It's good information, man.
The next thing I had that popped up after the original deadline was NDOT is planning on a over replacement on US 20 at West Dart Lake. So I'm working with them on an unofficial detour route. I don't need you guys to sign anything today. I just need it for before the unofficial detour route. I propose the unofficial detour route to be straight toward 327 to 100 south to 800 west and back to US 20. That's the most logical route that anybody's going to take. It's all hard surface.
Get a lot of repairs on 100 south as you.
Yeah, yeah, they like to do that. But unofficial routes, they are supposed to videotape before and after the project. So if there is damage, they can help, we can negotiate repairs or funds to help repairs. The reality is that's the most logical route anyone's going to take around. The other one is another six miles. So that one's going to drive an additional six miles when they're straight from 327 right there. They're going to put out 327, they're going to come across 100 south and 800 west. That's where they're going to go. So they're going to work out through the line of sight there. It is what it is. It's not ideal. It's not going to be their official posted detour, but the point of the unofficial detour is where do you think traffic's going to sneak around? Official detour, that's where they're going to go. I know that's where they're going to go. Because it's the shortest route. It's still paved. They can go another way, but they'll go once and realize it's ground, well, then they'll go back to 100 south to 800 west. That's how they're going to go.
Where's the call for being replaced in?
It's not in US 20 on the curves there, just north of West Dart Lake.
So it's west of 900 then between there and 327?
Yes, between 900 and 327.
It's same terms east and north or south, I guess.
I have a motion for the approval of the unofficial detour.
I do further discussion.
Everybody signify by. All right, other updates? We are back to working in areas. We will continue our patching from earlier in the year. We have some issues on 600 west. And then we'll keep working down that list until we're done. And we're sweeping those chip seals. That should be done this week, too. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, all. Coming to get approval for the COTS, they did send us another offer per se. The cost themselves did not change, but the terms did. They offered us five years with no interest rather than the three. So it cuts significantly down, obviously, the annual payment. I don't think any of the terms of the agreement has changed. It's just going to allow us, so we would own, we would own the equipment after five years now instead of three, which in our thinking is that's probably not going to change anything. I mean, whether we own it at three or five, because the service life, I believe, is seven on those. So we would just be able to change those over to any additional ambulance that we get in the next few years. So it's a pretty significant savings on an annual payment, almost, I think, $60,000. The other document that I had sent to you shows if we don't do the five years or percent payments, then the costs go up approximately 2% a year. And so we just end up being paying more for those.
Question.
It's still a question I had, if you looked at purchasing versus leasing, those options.
So I think that was brought up in a meeting you guys had with Stryker. And I think for, for us, like, I believe that purchasing is a better option. You get annual maintenance, you know, with the pro care and all that as well. I, I think we have a better resale value, especially if, you know, after five years, maybe we're starting to get a new one with those ambulances. I think that's a better option for us. I get that technology changes and maybe something newer and better comes out. But I mean, the technology that we're getting in the east is pretty substantial, I feel. The upgrades that we're going to get is going to last us, you know, into those seven years. I mean, we've, we've made new with, what, 10, 12 years now?
Well, it's 14 years.
Yeah, so, you know, I feel that they've held up well. And so that might be, you know, I think the new technology is going to last us that as well. So I think our, I think our buying option is those.
And then also, if we give over the purchase, our medical supplier, Boundary, they just started a buyback program that they're building. So they're actually doubling the buyback from Stryker versus them. So if we was telling them that after that 5% year mark, we'll probably most likely get double what Stryker's going to expect. Right now, Stryker's usually only given per COT about 5,000. When I talked to our rep for Boundary, they were almost at 7% for the buyback. So we are getting some savings back to us off of that. And that money that we recoup from Boundary would go towards our medical expenses, our, our supplies going forward. So that will kind of re-cost savings.
We'd be basically credit for our medical supplies. So, you know, that'd be a kind of savings there, I feel, as well.
Just, yeah. Looks like you're going to circle there.
It is, yeah, it is kind of the circle, you're right.
Back directly, but yeah.
Right. But it still, it still is going to come back to the department.
Sure.
Make a motion?
Bye.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Do you have all favors signify by with that?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Down the road, I'll crash a little more, but thanks, Zach. Okay, first item on other businesses, approval to be payroll for September 5th.
Good reason.
All favors signify by.
Aye.
Was that a D in that?
Yes. Minutes. Next item is amendments to some ordinance A-25-01. Reading has been completed for second reading.
Just, I had a few questions, so.
Okay.
Need some clarity on, on, second C on the animal feeding operation, particularly in number four. It talks about a manual management plan shall be submitted in compliance with all state requirements. Sure, the state requirements. Not really clear whether that's going to be permitted. Yeah, we're going to request that plan. We're going to have it permitted to be on file in our department up there. We're just going to say that it's, you know, it's going to comply and there's no other written anything that we could actually go back and look at as far as in file. That'd be my one thought. But if we're going to do that, management plan, it needs to be written in file here with the help of our building department, plan commission.
If I can go over your suggestion beyond that, that, that management plan.
Probably submitted and kept on file.
Section 09.02. Section C.
Yes.
Item four. Would like to see that changed to, a new management plan shall be submitted to the county and kept on file and be in compliance with all state requirements.
Yeah, it's still like those state requirements are, it's, they not, might not be as stringent, stringent as we think on that section. Section 24.02 and definitions.
Yes.
Okay, reading through that, there's a lot of ands, ors in there. You're reading through section one or item one in there. It says confined feeding of 100 to 299 or more. Now, 200 to 500, you know, a more swine and/or 10,000 to night or 9,999 file. So to me, in reading that, that means they could have a combination or several of those all on the same property. Now, that's anything that we want. That many animals I want. It's not misread. Is that what we want? I mean.
Someone has 500 acres.
Well, if it's on 500 acres, that's a little different than if it's on 5 acres or 10 acres. But don't say that.
As far as the definition goes, I see this as more as an explanation of what those items are as opposed to the part of the code that would enforce that, that metal could have on.
All your definitions are where you get your meaning to, to your verbiage. So as you're reading through this, these definitions give you meaning to what operation is, what, you know, what some of the numbers mean. So when they become vague or you don't know if that means one species or several species all on the same, you know, acreage, the definitions are what, telling you what those mean. So as those words are used throughout the code, I mean, that's what.
You have a suggestion, you have a suggestion on how you'd like to see that phrased.
Like to put that back to the plan commission and let them rephrase that. There's a lot of ands, ors. I did not write out a whole different definitions for those. Some of those are pulled directly out of their, their book. The ands, ors, that. And then like number two, there's actually dramatic layer in there, which I don't know if makes any difference, but it doesn't belong in there. Number three, when they talk about crop vegetation, porch growths or post-harvest residues are not sustained in normal growing season over at least fifty percent of the lot or facility. Those are or or ands. Ors, neither one of those belong there.
Don't have you seen that?
No, I haven't. I was at the plant commission meeting when it was adopted, but I didn't even have a copy of it then.
I'll let you have mine, your print memo. Those are just questions I had.
Yeah.
I needed time to really digest those.
I can see where that might be a little vague.
I say the definitions are where you get the meanings for all the words in your.
Yep.
Codes or ordinances.
The state requirements, the state regulates manure, they have written regulations, so and it changes from time to time.
Does, does the state or does the state chemist?
State chemist.
Yeah.
Develops the.
Yeah, manure management, because it's now fertilizer.
Sure, yeah. No different than potassium.
Yeah.
Well, then it goes back to the plant commission. You don't adopt it or if you change anything, it goes back to the plant commission to determine though if they want to make the changes or not. We just send it back with recommended regulation. Yes.
Probably play don't give you want a fine commission. Procedurally done, but it still be.
You would, well, you have a pass to get, so you now refer it back to the plant commission for, for clarification adjustment.
So we, we would leave the first reading approved and then just refer it back to them for the.
Yes.
Items. Yes.
For both changes or proposed. Little fact. Other review.
And then exact wording is what you want. What you want.
I think it's been the areas where he's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have exact wording that I'm really looking for.
Okay, just clarify. Clarify, clarify.
And all the ands and ors in the definitions. Think it just need to be stated. So there's the eight and ors.
So. You need like clarification on zero nine point zero two subsection C four. And. Definition and twenty-four point zero two definitions animal feeding operations.
Yeah.
I did right now exactly what he said on C four. If you want.
That's good. They could still.
They can. Motion in a second to refer those. Reviews back to commission.
Yep.
And further discussion. Very done. All favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Or it's just a review of treasurer's reports.
Yeah.
Motion that we review them.
Yeah. We're kind of doing order finance and order commissioners at the same time. Because order finance only.
Review discussion. All favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Multi-person reports.
It's like multi-person reports for our review.
A second, sorry. You're fine. Press. Very done. All favor signify with aye.
Aye.
I have an opportunity to review the schedule for twenty twenty-six.
My only thought was we considered moving day of week. We've, we've discussed this a couple of times. We have made any action on it. Get away from the Monday meetings.
Do you have a preference? Others gathering things, having our packages put together.
Extending another day is nice because things pop up. Do you think Tuesdays?
Yeah, we've with holidays, we already, so. We've heard a couple that get moved to Tuesdays.
They do.
Yeah.
Right now, I don't see any issues with it.
And we had discussed maybe because of some, some of the conferences we go to. I think it's worth a shot to try.
On Tuesdays?
Yeah.
I have never.
It's either way, so.
On the holidays, we do move some of the many people holidays.
I, 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 I think it'll help employees out maybe better with ours getting information to us and then they're not working over the weekend.
The only, the only thing would be what he said about conferences.
Right, I think he said there's a couple of hours. We looked at the one time.
And would any of them conflict with the council? You shouldn't, I shouldn't set her on the second.
But you put together that list of what it looks like on Tuesday and see possible conflicts.
Yep. Include the possible conflicts from conferences we go based on.
Okay.
I mean, the conferences fluctuate a little bit, but.
If there's two.
Yes.
Plus or minus two minutes.
It doesn't, if you go another day, we could still, the conferences, no matter what, are going to be in there, so.
So I think usually the conferences start later days.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's beneficial to, to. It's worth taking a look at and maybe try.
You do that.
Did I give final approval for the integrity contract? Think it was, they were going to do this, this second walk through to make sure they didn't miss anything. It was the initial positive was approved.
And we're going to split the funding on that.
Hey, I, you know. Left over money.
Yeah.
I don't know, Joe, that great is, is the Calister was cheap, but if it's split that funding, said to me, all of you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Did you talk to the sheriff about that?
We haven't.
Plans for any of the other funds?
We have not spoken with any about that. But originally they were going to come to you with that because that number was so much higher, sixty thousand originally, and you got it down. I thought, Abby, did you have the number that was coming off over? I know you had mentioned it.
We have. Items.
If you don't, that's okay. Should be twenty-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents left.
Remaining.
Remaining in that upgrade project.
Need a copy.
We've already approved it on the.
We've already approved it out of queue so they can, they can continue to work on the project, I guess. We should have phone call, we can see if he hasn't. So just right now, people.
Keep it, keep it there.
Do you claim his pay schedule for twenty twenty-six? Mercy.
Oh. You guys don't need this. They don't need to prove this.
We do, we don't.
You don't? Nope. We base this.
So they are there for our review. They are there for our review.
Um. We got to read it again too, based on mission meetings, so.
And manage approval claims, question on any of the claims. Okay.
Okay. That's okay. I have more. Oh. First make the. Actually says. It just struck me funny because I thought.
You're good.
It is. Okay, I don't think. I think. Yeah, that's the only one that comes. It just jumped off the page. I mean, like, what are we doing with that kit, words?
Up for the eight fifty-nine, seven sixty, thirty-five, A, B, C, and D.
Oh.
I said, oh.
Just clarify, jumped in there and took in these.
So just clarify.
You really give her a shot.
Go for it.
Yeah. I'm making motion for the approval of the nineteen fifteen twenty-five claims of eight fifty, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars and thirty-five cents and also claims A, B, C. Yeah. Last one.
Last one's a tax stamp.
You're actually. Ending. Sorry. Sorry, missed you.
Anything further? All favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Rick, did you want to see those claims that you were questioning? You want us to pull those out so you can just see what they are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you will look at the machine. Give you a letter out to.
Do you know?
We have. Yeah, from the, is the on-call procedure draft for highway. Brought our attention that it cannot get comp time for hours, they did not work. So we have to change the verbiage in that.
I just need to finish typing that up for the council, for you to approve. Instead of four hours, they get eight hours of on-call pay. Currently, they were given the choice of taking that either as a payout or being comp time. They have discount time because they didn't work it. So the can or comp time was something they didn't work. It's just eight hours straight time, no overtime, no comp time. Now, if they were part of that, then that would include, they could.
Okay, really physically.
It has to be physically worked, correct?
Also ensure that the on-call payout time, however you do it, is not calculated in for overtime calculation purposes.
Well, you don't.
Unless they physically.
Unless they physically work, yes.
Something to get that verbiage correct between you three.
Yeah, you have spoken with Chip a little bit about it also.
Yeah.
So do you want to hold off on it or do you want me to go ahead and move forward with the council tomorrow?
Um, it probably needs to wait till we have it correct.
Yeah.
I mean, his SOP, it is an SOP, but I have to put that other stuff on the salary ordinance.
Yeah, probably incorrect.
Thank you.
Just need to get that done before you head over. Final passage, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, whatever.
Have the addendum to the quick.
Yeah, so I have not talked about that. Let's see. Did you? Is it okay?
Good.
Thank you, because you're legal. Thank you. We had no signature on that and no notary seal, so I didn't know how else to do it other than.
It's fine, they approve it. For me, signed it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I understand what's going on there.
Yeah.
About the signing.
Alex is here, he just said, are we ready?
Well, but we can, we can possibly approve it. I'm not going to say we are going to approve it. A motion to approve the addendum to the quick claim feed for, I'll refer to it as the MSD Tower.
That's how Moses way of a retained ownership of the answer. But we can, but you'll be in a lawsuit.
Lightly. I'll make motion to approve. Okay, for your discussion. You want to favor sign with aye?
Aye.
You want to call it, they have it down, it's the ordinance, I'll sign it and then.
Yeah. You want to do a pretty double, just sign that. What do you think? Thank you. Just going to check up with that commission, please.
Okay. Anything else, Sharpton? Are you, is anything else?
Um, yes. We have money in the opioid restricted fund. Do you want us to make another payment to the community foundation, or do you want to hold up on that for a little while, if it's a little more towards the end of the year?
I was going to say, how often are we supposed to receive that?
I mean, uh. Once or twice a year, but currently, $8,632.
Thank you. Heard anything to leave us to make sure that way they only have to do one check.
Right.
So saying you won't.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense. Is that easier for you that way?
That's fine. It's, it's less, so we'll just make sure. We'll bring it before you again before the end of the year.
Is that? Have required appropriation.
We can just pay it straight out of that fund. Is already in there?
It's in there.
But it's not appropriated.
Right.
Yeah, probably will. Good idea.
So make sure sometime.
It'll have to be.
Probably November.
Yeah, it'll have to go in November. Won't do one in December unless I absolutely have to.
Right.
Meeting.
When we, we should just did that and sent it to the foundation, did we zero that out? Did we send them everything?
We sent them everything we had at that time.
So. Is there a way that you could do that appropriation sometime that doesn't specify the amount and just says the balance of that account?
I have to advertise the dollar now.
Times dollar, okay. All right, anything else?
He's coming down. I did hear that, we don't have to do anything with it, but I did hear that from Lynn and Matt. And he's been through December 31st or 26th, that's the contract states.
Okay.
Yeah. Of the oil mine from. What name was that? I prefer it.
Yeah.
You thought you did for that?
To pay out this year or next year?
What you did for next year.
Next year, okay.
So if you want to pay up this year, we'll have to do.
Well, there's a part take it out of queue.
Either one.
Like it needs to come out this year.
If they notify you of something. They're pressing.
San Joe River Basin Mission, we met last week. Go further discuss that drainage board, but some of the talk was about their presentation and an extra meeting afterwards about doing drain. Cars down for since the seventies. Maybe I just don't understand, but.
So thank you for going to do something along that line, so we probably ought to have a a long-term strategic plan as to how things are going to get done.
We need that regardless.
Whether it's per grain or per.
Yeah. But it's something that we'd have to have GIS, we could have them pull up and actually do parcel before we can see what it would generate or how much we'd need to cover. See if it's filed for or not for the money. So we can talk about that a little bit, drainage, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than I got to testify.
That's right, thank you.
Laura, yeah. Jim Julie hooked me up a nice little letter to read, so.
I heard you added some of those.
Very, I was just. Yeah, yeah, but yeah, very important part. Trying to keep funding for our state parks, Hoagigan is very important to our economy here. Be nice to keep them rolling and June pointed out the, the lack of investment by the state into Hoagigan's inn and like that in a lot of years, so. It's, it's a lot of work for a facelift. Hopefully they got the message, we'll see what happens.
Anything further? Reese.